At 7:16 PM. We will move on to item number seven, presentation from the Permanent Building Committee. Mike, if you want to introduce yourself and the members to the board and we'll go from there.
My name is Mike Morrison, I'm chairman of the Permanent Building Committee. Members of the committee that are here, Stan Zepnowski, Paul Lewis, John Conroy. Don is an excellent engineer, not on the committee, but an engineer, okay? Don has been very instrumental in providing us a lot of information that we needed to evaluate a lot of the buildings. A year ago, you appointed us to start the process of finding out what's wrong in town, in our town buildings. We spent the past year walking buildings, walking sites, reviewing all the buildings to make sure that we understood the buildings, their needs, what was in violation of life safety codes, where there were structural issues, where were there items that can be fixed that could eventually not lead to long-term disrepair. So we did a bunch of things in terms of evaluating all the buildings. Where were we able to look at items that could be done relatively inexpensively to prevent another issue, bigger issue? We tried to take care of those over the past year with the town and with the county code works and various numbers so that we can get through some of the small items, but if they don't become major items, so a few years down the road. After evaluating almost nineteen facilities in town, we spent the last couple of months really looking at a priority list that was requested by President Dr. Miller. And we came up with what we believe are three major buildings that we think are critical to getting fixed immediately over the next year, two years.
If in your packets is, that was handed out, there's the letter and the list, just so you can refer to it and make notes.
The fourth building that we, they're actually fourth and fifth buildings that we looked at which were the community center and ninety-eight bank station itself that until the town really decides what we're going to do long-term with those buildings, it's not advisable to put any immediate capital in there because we could probably work around different items that may benefit certain functions of the building. For example, in the town hall, you know, we have, we believe there's a major problem with fresh air intake into the building. You have various ventless, air conditioning units. If we do a major air conditioning overhaul in the building, we can take those units and replace and put in other areas. So those sort of things need to get really discussed and understood as we move through the process. We did feel though that the town hall, the library, the police station were the three highest priority buildings that needed to have major items fixed. There were some issues that related to fire code issues that we decided to fix. But we believe, you know, the items of large expenditures, large exposures related to window replacement and major structural issues, we need to be done as quickly as possible so that long-term we can save energy costs, we can save continued deterioration of buildings. These numbers that we put together are estimates that we discussed with the county committee, Donald Smith. They are strong, very strong estimates. I looked at, Don looked at, and after questions came in. You know, we probably will not spend all of that, but we want to make sure we had enough in the budget to make sure that the costs are covered. But, you know, when you start to look at the buildings a second time, third time, you see other things that are possibly wrong that we had. I was up to the high, the library last week and giving the library board a discussion on those rooms. And then as we walk the building a second time, we find other things. So, you know, what we want to do is try to put in a budget that each one of these buildings are sufficient to take care of the issues on a long-term basis for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years so that you're not having to come back to this on a annual basis. First Lieutenant Miller also asked us, you know, if we are able to secure additional funding, what other things can we do, what are, what other priorities? We really feel that the town really needs to look at the oil tanks in town, especially the abandoned tanks that are in place. You know, every one of those should be tested prior to us really pulling them further, so testing needs to be done immediately. Plus, for example, we have four abandoned oil tanks throughout the town. We have one aging one at the community center, and we have another one at the, well, the public works has a bunch of them. So what we want to do is set, those things are a priority because, you know, replacing the tank in a condition prior to its leaking is going to be much beneficial to the town's energy costs. We don't want to be inundating soils and taking that soil out of state and putting it somewhere where it's got to be found. So, you know, it's beneficial for us to look at those and do as much as we can on a different basis for those than at least test them and understand where we are. And with that, I'll open up the questions in the area. How much you want to make to us, we have pictures. Don put together a great book that's going to be used as a basis for the town to really follow on a maintenance schedule. We will then, as we continue for the next year, continue to look at building maintenance. What do we need to do on our ongoing maintenance program, each one of the buildings, so that we don't have these problems down the road.
Okay, so who has any just general questions from Mike or any members of the committee and then we'll kind of go from there.
Is there any estimated cost as to remediating the oil tanks?
Well, right now, we don't think there is any issues. We don't think any of them are leaking, but we can't be sure of that because if they haven't tested them over the last few years, they're going to be positive. We think that an oil tank replacement is going to be in the twenty to forty thousand dollar range. But there are certain things that, you know, if it's a replace, if it's a takeout, you need to, for instance, the library.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, Alex has put the stick down and we have seventeen of the oil in the town. So that's about a thousand gallons of salted oil sitting in there in eighteen years. Oil's no good, so it's got to be taken out and burned. So, you know, the worst thing is now we should test it from a compression standpoint so we make sure we have no leaks and get that oil out of there and really take it with the, how we could live down, as soon as possible. And that should be gone for every one of the abandoned tanks, so we know where to go, at least get the oil out.
And we've been putting money aside for the last couple of years as part of the capital plan for oil tank removal. We haven't started any removals as of yet, though.
Well, the reason I'm asking the question is, I remember, I want to say nineteen eighty, eighty-five, when Mr. Koskowalski was the first selectman, they found abandoned tanks at the high school. And it became a big darn deal about what to do about those tanks. And that's why I'm asking the question.
Right, that's why you really want to test every one of them.
Right.
Before it's right now, within the next, because we are immediately looking at something, we're not testing to see whether we are, that there are any.
And what is the cost for testing?
Generally, it's about a thousand, two thousand per tank.
Per tank?
Right, if you recall in the Shell gas station in Copley Hill.
Uh huh.
The place for the gas tanks, we couldn't see the excavator, that's how deep that is. So they were down twenty-five feet in the soils. And that soil has to be, I don't know if it's been burnt, so it's locked in state. I think they have to be locked state. We don't want to be caught in this situation. And all that, the soil needs to be burned. Is there any, so you think?
When you say the soil needs to get burned, are you, you talking about taking the soil someplace else?
Right, it has to, it has to be contaminated and then have to burn.
Okay.
Okay, so what other questions we have? Reason we asked, we put this committee together was to create this analysis to give us an idea to start. We have two funding sources. We have a reoccurring account that's now built into the budget that will slowly increase over the next couple of years. It's a hundred and fifty thousand this year. We hope to add fifty to seventy-five thousand a year to it. And the other, when we did the debt service models, we built in a five million dollar bond issuance to cover three and a half million in roads and one point five million in building repairs. So that's been built into the debt service model that if this board is agreeable to that, we would put it out for referendum with the November election to see if the town was open to that. So assuming the town was supportive of this and we went out, this work would be able to be done in the spring. These major ticket items that Mike has identified with the town hall, the library, and the police station. This group will continue to manage the projects as they go on. They will be the group that will be responsible and constantly updating the plan, deciding direction and focus. I mean, all these folks as we had talked about were kind of handpicked for this committee. They have professional expertise in what they do. So I think it's been a very comprehensive plan that they've put together. As Mike had mentioned, it's taken them a little over a year to get this into place. This will also help us with grant opportunities. We've already uncovered one, actually Don is working with our librarian Susan Garvey on some windows up at, at the library. So again, having this plan in place is going to allow us to be a little bit more proactive with grants and things like that, so. That's kind of where we stand as of now, so. Again, this was more informative to have it introduced to you so you can look at it, review it. If need be, we can have the committee come back and have further discussions. But again, the hope is to have this put on for a referendum vote in November, which means we would have to have decisions done by August at some point. So that'll give us about two months to make a determination and get that out to the people, so.
If you want us to continue the presentation to the general public relative to some of the issues that we've seen and look at and determine, we will put together the whole suite, slides, pictures, so that if the public can see exactly what we're talking about. Yeah, we did meet with the Board of Ed to go over some of the issues. The Board of Ed did formally come to us with a report that they had to address. We spent one entire evening walking senior high school that was, had numerous violations down in the west side, right? In the state. And what we did is we really pushed back at them and said, these were your responsibility to take care of. And these are not expensive items to take care of. So go do that first. Now, we recognize certain areas like handicapped accessibility for the archorean, you understand that? But there were numerous other ones down the road that weren't even touched that were very minor in nature that really should have been standard maintenance items taken care of by the community. And really, what we believe our task is as a permanent building committee is to look at capital construction issues, major issues that are long-term in nature that are minor, that are maintenance issues.
I think doing, having this type of expertise advising us, unfortunately, in the past, we've done repairs, we've done work on buildings and it wasn't necessarily the right thing. And what we found out is two years later, it didn't make sense and we end up spending more because we've done something wrong. This will be a plan, everything will fit together and we'll just put the pieces in place and move it right along, so.
I'll give you a small example of what we mean about what we see and what should be done. Alex and I were, and I stand with that library, we're talking. And Alex was showing us a column that actually was cracked, the former residential library. When you start to look at that and say, okay, these need to be cared, these need to be fixed, but what's the cause? And all you got to do is look off and you see the gutter with an overside bounce pile that the water coming off is inside the bounce pile. So the water is coming out and flowing on top of the building. And it's getting on the brick, winter time, soon that water gets inside the brick and inside the mortar, it cracks the brick. That would have been a simple fix, a lot of that, now it's going to be more expensive. Those are the things we're trying to prevent.
Yeah, like when you saw the water, then you got up and the water was coming in, the bathroom, the lab.
Yeah, and then again, we have peeling paint in the bathroom, okay, downstairs. Well, because the water's coming right down, that's not being controlled, so it's completely right in the foundation. So those are the things we're trying to help the town mitigate with community services.
Okay, so any questions, comments, thoughts?
No, it's a, it's a very detailed, very well-written report. And I, I appreciate all the detail and the hard work that this committee has put into it. My concern from an environmental standpoint would be the oil tanks and the potential of those oil tanks leaking. And we don't know because they're so far into the ground where we stand with them. I mean, we know the oil's been in there, it's about an inch, so it's probably sludgy. Having to send that off and the cost of that.
That's going to be costly.
That's going to be very costly.
Right, but more costly is that those tanks are the.
Exactly. So from, just from my standpoint, I would think that the oil tanks, which could be very costly down the road, should probably be moved up. Regardless of what we know we're going to do with the community center or not, it will, if, if we were to sell it, and I use the words quote, if we were to ever sell the community center, it would still be the town's responsibility to remove those oil tanks.
But that's what you do. It has to be, right, so it has to be closed. So if you would look at the useful life of that existing tank, is it looking used to life? If it is, you've just got to make sure the town is aware that you've got a year, two, three years to work on. That is on earth, that's got to be taken care of. I'm more concerned about the abandoned tanks and what I was letting know is the life of that. That thing has to be there five, six years now abandoned, so, you know, that would be a real concern.
I, I agree with that. I think that should sort of be a priority.
Right. Custodians at this point. But there was never any money dedicated toward building repair to that extent.
Right, no, I understand that.
Which we now have built into the budget, so.
Right, I would say, that's just my point.
First Lieutenant Miller said, you know, we're willing to sit there and take in quotes and manage the process for the town, you know, bringing that most of us are in the industry, it is, you know, we're able to look at things a lot better.
I think that's the advantage they bring to the table. It's not laypeople looking at this, these are professionals that know what they're looking at, what they're doing.
I think it's a, it's a well-educated board and a well-advised board.
Anything else, Stephanie, anything? Karen here?
I'm sorry.
Mike, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding letter of approval for Connecticut State Library Grant for library construction. So as we had just mentioned, through the conversations and the information that came out of these conversations and talking with the librarian, Susan Garvey, she had reached out to Don. And you can see, Don, I'll ask you, you can give a little bit more specific on this letter, notice of intent, I should say.
Actually, this grant application couldn't have come at a better time. And talking, we're working on three towns buildings, but this is the first step in securing state library grant construction money. And one of the categories that they fund is energy conservation. So a couple of projects that were on our list that were dealing with about fifty thousand dollars on our list are pretty qualified as energy conservation projects. So regulation, excuse me, the regulation report includes and authorizes this middle of the zone is an intent that basically sign a list to the state and starts that process of looking at whether a project would be eligible or not. Assuming a matching grant, they'll provide a refund or whatever, then we could have a match for it.
Okay, any questions or comments for Don?
Don, when would you hear, what would be the?
Uh, this first step is due by June thirtieth and then I'm not sure what the following steps are after this, but I think this is the first step to get in the rest of the, in the project.
So it doesn't say they'll give monies by X date in the future?
It says, so what?
When are they going to award the money?
I would be out in the future, the energy conservation money has to be spent in a year, so.
And this has to be submitted by June thirtieth, which is next week.
Correct. That's why I couldn't have come up at a better time.
This is just a notice of intent.
Right.
We want to do a project, it's like, how much is it?
Comments, questions? Okay, then at this point, I'll entertain a motion that we accept and endorse the notice of intent. That's submitted by Suzanne Garvey, our library director and Donald Smith, town engineer, for work and energy conservation projects to be done at the Seymour Public Library. Motion by Karen, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, discussion, take possible action regarding awarding of downtown streetlight bids. At this point, I will ask for a motion to table. Motion by Al, second by Anne Marie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes five zero. Item number ten, discussion, take possible action regarding two thousand sixteen diaper need awareness week proclamation, excuse me. So in your packet, you have two things. First, we have a letter from Megan Tarby, who is the executive director of the Connecticut Partnership for Children, as well as an attached proclamation. So I'll read the letter first and then we'll go through the proclamation. Says, Dear Mr. Miller, I'm writing to you as the executive director of the Valley Diaper Bank located in Seymour, Connecticut, to request that you proclaim September twenty-sixth through October second, two thousand sixteen, as diaper need awareness week in Seymour, Connecticut. Your proclamation would be used in conjunction with other states and local governments around the United States to inform our community that there are families who cannot afford diapers for their children and diaper banks across the country that are helping families obtain the diapers they need. Last year, diaper banks and the National Diaper Bank Network secured similar proclamations from the governors or state legislatures in multiple states and cities. Thank you for your leadership and recognition this needed in Seymour, Connecticut. Although we have made great progress this year in addressing the needs by distributing more than fifteen thousand diapers to families in need, it is still a chronic condition for many families in our community. Valley Diaper Bank is a member of the National Diaper Bank Network, which has been actively raising awareness and addressing diaper needs across the country. The National Diaper Bank supports a network of over two hundred active diaper banks and many more starting diaper programs located in nearly every state in the United States. In conjunction with the National Diaper Bank Network, individual diaper banks across the country will be holding events and working with their local and state governments to raise awareness of this need and the good work that diaper banks do in helping parents obtain the basic necessity so that they can provide for their children, or obtain this basic necessity, excuse me. Background information about our program at the Valley Diaper Bank and the National Diaper Bank Network are attached along with the sample language that might be helpful in drafting a proclamation. We look forward to working with your office on this proclamation and representing Seymour, Connecticut in the national campaign. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Megan Tarby. So there's the aforementioned information. So we have the proclamation, which I'll read and then ask for a motion of acceptance. Says, whereas diaper need and the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experience diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age and forty-eight percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of fifty diaper changes per week over three years. And whereas diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as six percent of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary. Therefore, obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas the supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas the people of Seymour recognize that addressing diaper needs can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas Seymour is proud to be home to various community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers and helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families throughout various channels. Now, be it therefore resolved that I W. Kurt Miller, first selectman of the town of Seymour, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-sixth through October second, two thousand sixteen, as diaper need awareness week in the town of Seymour and encourage the residents of Seymour to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in Seymour. And. Environs. Environs. Okay. Have a motion to accept the resolution as read. A motion by Al, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes five zero. Rory's using big words again. All right. Okay, item number eleven, discussion, take possible action regarding potential endorsement of a draft of plan of conservation and development for the town of Seymour. In your packet, you have a letter from Joseph Seehaw, who's the chairman of the Seymour Planning and Zoning Commission. Says, Dear Mr. Miller, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby refers the proposed revision of Seymour's plan of conservation and development to the Board of Selectmen as required by section eight dash twenty-three of the Connecticut General Statutes. The statute provides a sixty-five day review period during which the board may hold a public hearing on the plan and may make any recommendations for revision. The board may endorse or reject the plan or any part thereof. The commission would be happy to discuss the plan with the board and hopefully resolve any issues during the review period. Very truly yours, Joseph Seehaw, as I had mentioned. Okay, now, the plan of conservation and development is a hundred and twelve pages long. Plus, there's an additional eight pages of maps that go along with that. That was emailed to all of your emails this afternoon. So you'll be able to review that online, but you want to print out seven versions of that. That would be way too much paper. So I wanted to give everybody just some general information. I know Brian will make a comment or two as well. But I want everybody to review this. We're going to have representatives from the Nogentuck Valley Council of Governments who assisted in putting the plan of conservation and development come and actually do a formal presentation for us on July fifth. But I wanted to give everybody the opportunity to, to review that. Once they come and they do that, at that point, we can start the sixty-five day review period. I know that there have been several public meetings in developing the plan. But the selectmen themselves, we can hold a, a public meeting or two, a public hearing, excuse me, or two with regards to that. I know Brian, you want to comment on that?
Yes. That is a statute, you can do it, the legislative body may, but are not required to hold additional public hearings. But you do need to either endorse or reject the plan or portion of the plan. You can endorse some of it, reject other portions of the plan. Let's see if you're discussing. You can also submit comments and recommend changes to that. Should you reject a portion of the plan that requires a super majority, there's to be a review. We'll take a look at it, make sure that it all steps towards mandate, the items are covered by the lighting. So things that the town wants to discuss and want to do.
Okay, so again, this is more for informational purposes, give everyone the opportunity to review it, come prepared for their, with their questions. And as I said, folks from the Nogentuck Valley Council of Governments will come and make the formal presentation to us and then we'll take it from there. Okay? Excellent. Okay, item number twelve, discussion, take possible action regarding approval of proposed two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen WPCA budgets. Okay. In front of you is the budget. Now, there is more backup that is included, but we just didn't put it in, in the packets. That information has been presented. Budget has been reviewed by Tony Caserta, our director of operations. And he feels that this is a budget necessary for operation of the WPCA for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. So by charter, the budget needs to be accepted and approved by the Board of Selectmen and then a copy will be sent to the Board of Finance for their review. So what questions does anyone have?
At the top, it says allowance for uncollectible. I take it that's uncollectible fees?
Correct.
And do we usually refer that to a collection agency or?
WPCA addresses that? Yep.
Can you just give us all a little, maybe just because I'm new, a little?
Can you just give us all a little, maybe just because I'm new, a little information on the town's actual relationship with the WPCA?
I'll defer that question to our WPCA representative, Anne Marie Goss. I'm only kidding. The WPCA, the last charter revision, the charter revision has the WPCA now being self-sufficient. So in the past, where the town would handle the debt and things like that, once all the current debt runs out, the WPCA will be responsible for all its own debt, all its own operations. The town essentially backstops the WPCA. So if they were to run short of funding, didn't hit the revenue numbers, their allowance for uncollectibles was $400,000, the town at that point would step in and help backstop them. But the WPCA is designed to be self-sufficient and run on its own.
And we just start a backup plan if something goes wrong with them?
Yeah, at this point, yeah. Now, in the past, it was, like I said, it was, the debt was co-mingled, which I didn't necessarily agree with, because you have folks that don't have public sewer, bless you, that were paying for part of the debt service costs. As I said, the last charter change broke that out. So going forward, those that use the system will be the ones that'll be responsible for the debt and so on. All right, thank you, Phil. Questions, comments, thoughts? I mean, the one number that is in there is the depreciation number. Again, that is new. This is the third year now we've had depreciation in there. That number comes directly out of the audit and is designed for the WPCA to accumulate funds to be used for larger capital purchases, which they're going to have some need of that coming forward. It can also be used as an emergency reserve fund. You can do some different things with that. In the last contract, John Lavolci, the Chairman, and Anne Marie, who's the Vice Chairman, we actually, they were able to negotiate some larger capital purchases, as well as part of the contract, about $100,000 worth of equipment, which was, which was nice. So.
Great.
Thoughts, comments, questions? Okay, at this point, then, I'll entertain a motion to accept the draft proposal for the WPCA budget for the period of fiscal year 2016 through 2017. Motion by Al.
Second.
Motion second by Karen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 4-0-1. And please note, Anne Marie, subvention. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 13, discussion, take possible action on the capital plan. Okay, at the last meeting, we introduced the capital plan to you. We had some general conversations about it. I wanted to give you folks the opportunity to go home and digest it, think of any questions, concerns that you may have, and then we can address those tonight. Assuming everyone is comfortable, then the Board will vote on the capital plan, and this is what we will use for fiscal year 2017. Funding is already in place, so this is just a matter of the actual projects themselves. With that, I'll open it up to questions, thoughts, comments? No thoughts, no questions, no comments?
Give us time to look it over.
Okay. Again, the capital plan this year is limited in purchases, because we do have designated $205,000 for a large dump truck. Again, we need to start to upgrade that fleet, because those trucks are getting old quickly. Okay, if there's no other thoughts or comments, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Town of Seymour 2016, 2017 Long-Term Capital Plan as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Al, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Item number 14, appointments. We have three appointments before us. Mark Thompson, ordinance hearing officer. It's a reappointment. It's a two-year term. It expires June 30, 2018. I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Steve Koulas, ordinance hearing officer. It's a reappointment. It's a two-year term. It expires June 30, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Stephen, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Frank Conroy, Regional Water Authority. It's a reappointment. It is a three-year term. It expires June 30, 2019. Motion by Stephen, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Okay, item number 15, tax refunds and abatements. The filing overpayment of tax payments in total of $213.08 need to be approved for refund in accordance with the provisions, excuse me, of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes dated the 21st day of June 2016. Signed, Dana D. Flack from our tax office. So can I have a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented?
So moved.
Look at that, motion by Karen, second by Al. Just under discussion, everybody look, make sure there's no conflicts. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is transfers, and we have four transfers before us tonight. And again, we vote on the validity of the transfer, and then the Board of Finance determines the funding and such. But first one is Control Number 7. It's from the First Selectmen's Department. It's transferring the amount of $8,499.96, and it's being broken up into three different accounts. Salary for the First Selectmen's position, $7,104.2. Social Security, $543.46. And retirement, $852.48. And just on the details, transfer needed to fund the Selectmen's raise, the salary increase from $72,000 to $85,000 per year, or $1,394.23 to $1,632.62, a difference of $238 over 29.8 weeks for the year. The Downtown Attendant did not start until late last year, so the Attendant is paid $300 per week. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve Control Number 7, a transfer of $8,499.96 from professional services to salary Director for Selectmen, Social Security, and Retirement. Motion by Al. Second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, all abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 4-0-1.
Chair.
I abstain. Oh, I'm sorry, I abstain. Sorry. Okay.
Okay.
All right, the next one is Control Number 8. Public Works, oh, excuse me, a transfer of $7,597.83. It's from the account earmarked for a vacuum truck for Public Works, and it will be transferred to salary regular employees, the amount of $4,730.95. Social Security, $361.92. Retirement, $567.71. And health insurance, $1,937.25. And under the notes, as you can see, it's transfers to fund the floater position that this Board approved on April 19, 2016, and was also approved in the 2016, 2017 budget. The Public Works Vacuum Truck will not be purchased. Any excess funds will be used for this transfer. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve Control Number 8 in the amount of $7,597.83 from Public Works Vacuum Truck, the salary regular employees, Social Security, Retirement, and Health Insurance.
So moved.
Motion by Al.
Second.
Second by Stephen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the, oh, excuse me, next transfer, I apologize, is Control Number 9. This is for the Public Works Department. This is coming from our Public Works Director, Tony De Primo. It's a transfer of $40,000. That is coming, again, from the Public Works Vacuum Truck line item, and it's going to repairs and maintenance. And this will be done to fix the mechanic's truck lift, which is in desperate need of repair. If anybody has any specific questions, we can ask Sean directly. Again, the Public Works Vacuum Truck purchase, something that after the fiscal year started, it was deemed something we would not move forward with. We went a different direction. So that money is available to be used. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve Control Number 9 in the amount of $40,000 from Public Works Vacuum Truck to repairs and maintenance.
So moved.
Motion by Al. Second by Karen. Discussion. Sean, anything you want to add?
I, I'm just going to run with this, but first thing, this is coming out of the line item, it's out of our operating.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, you are.
Correct.
I was going to say, we didn't hold on that.
No.
Now, we, like I said, as far as lift is concerned, we, you know, we got a couple extra minutes. We actually weighed up other options, getting rid of that style lift, going with a different style lift, and it was just going to be almost double price, and this was by far the most efficient. That's not that out.
Is, is what we have still functional?
Or, it is. It works, but it's getting questionable as far as whether or not to say it's not working, trying to do that. It's possible that it's substantial, my answer is that.
But you didn't think this year was, was the right time for it, no?
No, it is. That's why we.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I guess what I meant was the vacuum truck. There's no need for that?
The vacuum truck was, we were going to make the consortium purchase of the Town, and this was our portion. There was grand money involved, and it's not going to work out. So this is our portion, the Town's portion of the consortium purchase. It was going to, that was to collect what it was.
It would have been Seymour Beacon Falls and Oxford through an ICE grant, but we deemed the vacuum truck not the appropriate purchase. So instead, if you remember a couple, about two months ago, we voted on the roller and some other pieces of equipment for, for $20,000. So there's $80,000 additional in that line. So we're using it to take care of other things toward Public Works.
Okay.
We want to keep the money kind of working for Public Works.
In route like the work, because it's the, that portion of the board, it's pretty effective.
Yeah.
Okay. I wouldn't want to go under it.
Well.
Okay, any other questions, comments, thoughts? No, thank you, Sean. Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Last transfer before us is Control Number 10. Money will be coming out of two accounts, other contingency in the amount of $2,110, and other contingency salary in the amount of $6,000. And it'll be going to salary regular employees, $6,778. Social Security, $519. And retirement, $813. And under explanation, the transfer is for the accounting manager's wage increase. The increase was from $26.64 an hour to $30.54 cents an hour as of July 1, 2015. The July 22, 2015, the Clerical Union Contract was amended to reclassify the accounting manager's position. The wage increase was not included in the budget line item. The budget did include estimated increases in the contingency line item. So at this point, we are still in contract negotiations, so the money was intentionally put into the contingency line. So that way, it wasn't as easily found to hinder our contract negotiations. So with that, then, I'll entertain a motion to approve Control Number 10, a transfer out of other contingency in the amount of $2,110, and other contingency salary in the amount of $6,000, going to salary regular employees, $6,778. Social Security, $519. And retirement, $813. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Stephen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item is item number 17, which is correspondence. We have two pieces of correspondence. One is the May 2016 report from our Public Works Director, and then the second is a legal opinion that was requested by our MSAC Committee with regards to oversight of Seymour ambulance and potential changes that could be done to that oversight. All right, item number 18, public comment. Is there any additional? Yep, Debbie did that. Nope, no, sorry. I was just asking about the tax refunds. So. Item number 18, public comment?
Do that anymore.
Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Asking one last time, is there any public comment? We'll close public comment. We'll move on to Selectmen's public comments. Stephen?
Thank you. I know it kind of, it kind of sounded like a broken record here with specific roads, but I had a gentleman who lives on Pheasant have a concern with me about, obviously, he wants his road done. He says that there's an issue, particularly in the summers, with the oil coming up on the road. He thinks it was never sufficiently addressed. And he says that, you know, if people walk on the street and then walk into his house, there's, they track oil all throughout his home, all throughout his floor, carpets. So he was hoping that that would be addressed sometime in the near future. That's all I have. Thank you.
Now, was from the chip ceiling?
Yeah. According to him, I couldn't really tell. I didn't get a good look at the road.
I thought all those roads were done, but I'll.
Off of Colony.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't.
Yeah. So I'll, but I'll look into that. I'll let you know.
Okay, sure.
I'll shoot you an email tomorrow, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, Karen?
I've had several people ask me for a list of when the future roads are going to be repaired.
Meeting with Brian tomorrow. The draft, the report will be ready for presentation to this Board at our second meeting in July. All.
Is that going to be made public?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it'll be presented to the Board.
All right, now.
288 roads are all ranked and classified.
All right.
That's quite comprehensive.
Now, the only other two things I have, and this, please trust me when I say this is not a criticism.
I honestly don't know who Gary is.
[laughing]
I'm weak, Karen, go ahead. I'm sorry. Couldn't help myself. But Sean has an answer on Gary Road.
I'm never going to live this down.
Probably not, no.
What do you mean, I started it? I didn't name the park?
Yeah, I'll tell you after. We have an answer. We have an answer.
You have an answer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to let Sean give it, if that's okay?
Where was the public comment?
Yeah.
[inaudible].
But I'll answer during Selectmen. I'll defer the floor to Sean during First Select, my comments.
Okay.
To let him answer, but.
We're going to the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Public comment at the next meeting.
Yes.
Please do not let me go another two weeks, not knowing who the heck Gary is.
We can't answer until the shirts come in.
I have some names I'd like to suggest.
But.
Anyway, anyway.
Karen, please go on with your criticism.
Anyway, this is not.
It's okay, I won't take it as criticism, I promise.
It's not a criticism.
I won't take it that way, I promise.
I'd like to know who is picking our banners.
The Downtown Committee picked the banners.
Okay, because at Christmas time, they were purple. Purple is Easter.
Um.
And now, and now, you know, I, I go to church down in Ansonia. They have the most beautiful banners down there. They really do. They are so patriotic, you know, so red, white, and blue. They're beautiful.
Okay.
So I was just wondering if there's any input that we might have.
You can go to Economic Development Commission, who's taking that over from the Downtown Committee, and make recommendations.
Who is that?
Economic Development.
Yeah.
They meet at 6:30 during the first Tuesday of each month.
First Tuesday of each month.
So allow you public comment before our meeting.
Yep.
Like I said, I'm not criticizing.
I don't think it is a, I don't think it is a criticism. Don't worry about it. Yeah, there's, we have a set list of when, what's available and when it goes out. But the summer, the summer. But the summer, the summer banners are very similar to Ansonia's, I mean, the flags look a little different.
They are, they're very similar.
Very similar. Christmas ones, I can't speak to what Ansonia has, I'm not, not aware of that.
Christmas ones were purple.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was a snowman in the light purple, yes.
I thought those were blue.
And I, it might be light purple to make the snowman stick out, because the snowman's white, I don't, I don't know, but that's a question we can ask, it's not a problem, that's not a criticism, there's nothing wrong with that.
I, I don't mean it to be a criticism, I really, truly don't.
Well, yeah, that's another.
Well.
But, no, no reaction, thank you.
I'm talking about red and green, I'm not talking about anything religious.
Okay, no, that's not, that's not a problem. What else? That's it?
That's it for me.
Fantastic. And, no criticism. No criticism, thank you.
And I want to know who Gary is.
We'll get to Gary, Gary's, you gotta, you gotta build up, it's the anticipation of it.
Get to Gary. Wanted to congratulate the Seymour High School Girls' Softball Team on their state title. Great job there. Also wanted to congratulate the Seymour Soccer U-12 Girls' Travel Team, won their age group at the Joseph A. Conti Tournament this past weekend in Cheshire. Great coaches and a great group of kids, and all our teams there competed and did well, so, as President of Seymour Soccer, I'm very proud of them, and of our volunteers. And I just wanted to ask a quick question, how the graffiti cleanup is going around town?
Um, yeah, it's okay. Yeah, you clean up, it gets put back on, you clean up, it gets put back on.
Yeah, that's what you have to do.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, there's some spots on state roads that need to be addressed, CVS is one, on that electrical box. Public Works did some painting on the walls over here in the Trussel Lots, and different things like that.
Great.
But, you know, if it's seen and reported, we try to get out and address it.
Great.
We definitely haven't gotten it all, but.
So can people report that on the Facebook page, or call Town Hall?
They can do it on the Facebook page, they can go into, on the website, report it that way, they can call, they can call our office, they can call Public Works, they can, we'll get to it.
Good to know. Thank you.
Al, Sunday.
Karen wants to hijack some time.
We've, we've had this conversation before, a couple of years ago, and I told you, when I was a freshman in college, I did a term paper on graffiti in ancient Rome. You're never going to get rid of it. It's not going anywhere unless you catch, unless you catch the kids who are doing it.
I agree to an extent. I think if you let it sit there, it sends a message that people don't care, and they'll keep doing it and doing it, and they keep doing it and doing it, and keep painting over it and painting over it. That's just my philosophy, I wouldn't give in. If you catch them, great, I think they should be prosecuted if they're caught.
I'm not saying give in. What I'm saying is that graffiti has been a problem since the beginning of time.
Oh, yeah. I'm with you, history makes it so.
Anne Marie? Oh, I'm sorry, do you have more? Anne Marie?
I really have nothing, because I forgot the thank you note sitting on the table from my daughter to read, so.
Okay.
She's in North Carolina helping her mom, so. I, I did a mommy, oopsie.
Oh, it's okay.
She'll come in and she'll gladly read it.
I'm sure she'll.
I kind of wish she was here earlier today, because she would have put you, and you, and you in her place. They had, they're picking on me, Karen, is all I have to say.
We were advising Anne Marie not to break the law, that's what we're doing. So, if, Brian, if it's okay with you, I'd like to defer my comment to Mr. Walsh to allow him to address the outstanding Gary question.
Gary!
Thank you. Sean?
I've yet to confirm, I was going to go up to the town record to see if I could confirm this, but I hope around other people in town with a vendor a lot longer than I. And the story goes is that that road leading in was there long before the park, and was named after the guy that took houses in there, whose name was Gary Park. So, incidentally, we just happened to put a park at the end of the road, it was called Gary Park Road, and it became the.
And I was told it was his grandson.
So it should be Gary Park's Park.
Yeah.
The road was named Gary Park Road long before there was a park.
Because there was an actual person named Gary Park, so it should be Gary Park Park.
Better than Gary Drive.
It would be Gary Park Road.
Well, that was Gary Drive, not Gary Road.
Gary Park Park Road, yeah, yeah.
Gary Drive.
The road was named Gary Park Road long before the park was.
So there's no, well, it is Gary, but Gary was his first name.
And the other thing, can I ask Council?
No.
Is it?
Of course you can't, Karen, of course you can't.
Is it true, I was told, that before you can change the name of a road, you have to get everybody's permission who lives on that road?
I don't, I don't know the answer.
I've never heard of that rule.
Are you planning to make a proposal to change a road? Because I'd prefer not to have Town Council look into that, because that will cost us money.
Well, first of all, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want it to cost us any money. But secondly, sorry, Mary Toole lawyer, um.
I think we'd be hard-pressed to change the name of a road at this point.
Gary Park.
Gary Park Drive or Gary Park Road?
What's the difference?
Yeah.
Name it after a park.
I was thinking McConney.
McConney, what?
Might as well be McConney.
There's already, there's already a McConney Court.
It's get confused with the County Grove, 34.
Well, first of all, when I moved to Great Hill, there were three north, there were three Benham Roads.
Yep.
I lived on Benham, there was a, a middle Benham, and then there was a south Benham. And then all of a sudden, the town decided to change, and now I live on North Benham Road, and now, there's a middle Benham Road. Right, you?
That's me.
Isn't it you?
It's me, yeah.
And then there's South Benham Road.
Because eventually, they were, they were supposed to connect them at one point in time, and they never did.
But they never did. But, Mr. McConney was my principal in high school, and even though I know there's a McConney Road down by you, McConney Court.
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 Then there's McConney Grove down on 34.
Did he live on this road in this area?
Mr. McConney?
Yeah.
He lived by Al.
Okay, so why would we be naming a road not where he lived? After him?
My, my point is, I've been racking my brains to think of who a distinguished person was that we could name the road after.
But why are we going after Gary Park? And if we're getting too deep into discussion and not.
Because who's Gary?
Put in the development.
Yeah.
I don't think we should change that history, man, it's fine.
Yeah, if, if you'd like to do that, let Roy know, we'll add it for July 5, if you'd like to discuss it.
All right. Good idea.
Okay, any other comments from Selectmen? Brian, anything like that? Okay.